We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Any motion to refer to meetings?
So moved.
Agreed.
Second.
All is in favor tonight?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, notification of opening meetings back in the back room on the door. We'll call it a chance.
Yep.
One.
Yep.
That's all, guys. Like, yeah.
Yes.
And Melissa.
Yeah.
Copies into there.
I know.
To prove that.
Did you have to change something like that?
No, I don't have a contract. We need to get a better driver. It has to be a full size.
Uh, so that's gonna be through.
Someone will have a question.
We can approve the terms, approve the terms. Hold on a second.
That's James.
So, yeah.
That's all.
Two, three, yeah. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Do you want, do you have a motion to be approved or? What was your? Someone?
Locking up door.
Second.
Keep a second in, all favors, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on into the consent agenda. Forty eight more minutes from last. Those look good, we can go on to the annual report. Couple CDs coming to maturity this month. Should receive notification on the new rate, uh, any day.
There's quite a discrepancy on the rates right now.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be nice to see those two inch higher as a lower CD amount, getting a lower rate, but, um... Anyway, next, next month you'll have two new rates there, Brunswick and Madison.
Will they roll them all through or will they?
Yeah, they automatically rule. We've got, again, we've got funds in the budget to increase those, and when we get COVID in the festival, we'll know if we can use it for those purposes.
What's have some perky income come for next year?
January. This, this, things get thin in December.
Hoping for some title money this month, so...
What's that?
I said, I'm hoping for some title money this month, so we're appreciative, so that's what helped us go next, last year.
I paid all my taxes, so you should go out.
All right.
Sure.
My question.
Can we thank you for that?
So is there something, thing that we've paid that was percentage wise so far ahead of last year?
The bus.
Uh?
The bus.
Oh, we paid for that, but we had to.
But we took it out of general.
Your expenses always show, we, you know, but we, we could have the same percentage there, honestly, we could add a revenue one. Kind of show percent of revenue that comes in on a monthly basis.
Has the boosters made a payment to the school?
Yeah, not the big one yet, uh, but they have. They were still, uh, trying to get a couple of the big ones that would go on the back of us. So there's a significant amount of revenue coming from booster check.
So you're saying you can make that figure look however you want, is that what you're saying?
No, I would never say that publicly. Check on the dollar. Be done next month, so listen.
Thank you.
I'll have some better. Anything else there? Uh, one of the claims for this month?
Yeah, I've got one, I've hit the darts.
It's like, ooh, that's a little.
Bus insurance, I assume that's for all buses, it's not just for the new buses?
It's for the new.
That's an annual premium for, annual premium, you know.
How's that compare to the regular bus, you know?
What's a little more?
But that's an annual premium of seven hundred and thirty-four.
Yeah.
It's not too bad. Sixty bucks a car. Seeing the repairs on the bus yet, have they got any luck? Trying to find a place to house that culture.
Bob hadn't, hadn't had, got anybody locked in yet for some work in spring. So we, we haven't really gotten anywhere yet on, you know, housing it on our, in our facility. So we, we may be ready to have Michigan State cave come and visit with you about that, but, uh, but we don't have anybody locked in for that work, or obviously, I assume.
Just needs to be taller, right? wider.
And wider. I think we, ideally, we wanna take two doors, make them one another width, and then we gotta go higher, so... There's some structural things that would have, significant structural things that would have to be done. Questions on claims?
So I see there's some science books in here. How does that come in mid, midterm? Do you usually start the school year with new books?
They, we probably just got the invoice.
So you've had.
I'm not mistaken, it was.
We didn't.
We started right after this.
It was late, I didn't have a copy of it, I just got a copy of it and pay it, so...
It was in early September.
It does have a nineteen of October date, but it probably took that long to ship everything in, to everything.
Imagine that.
Anything else on the claims, any questions? If not, then leave a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I made a motion to accept the consent agenda, stay.
Okay, second. Second, you accept the consent agenda, no? All favors, aye?
Aye.
There's no, motion carries. We go to seven, the student presentation? Nothing for you this evening. Okay. Name, number A, public comment. Who wants to speak tonight? Okay. We move on to number nine, it looks like Byron's here to oversee HVAC.
Well, thank you for letting me come and show you the control system.
Yep.
I got it there, I got the remote. Yeah, I got.
She's like this woman, I had a risking.
See what you heard.
That's all right there, got working schedule for the rest of the year.
And as, as I'm going through, if you have questions, please ask. Um, we'll just kinda go through and I'll show you some of the things that Darren and Gail can see, you know, in the building and what they can and can control and change. Okay? Um, first off, there's multiple views. The one that's easy for everybody to kinda do in the morning is the floor plan. Gives you a real quick view of each room and kinda where the temperature's at, and then you can see there's rooftop one through seven. So if, say, one of those areas, the temperature's either really cold or really hot, um, if you go pick on that room, we'll just do, uh, home ec for now. You click on that room and it takes you right to that room so you can see what's going on. If, let's say the heater wasn't working, it was really cold, you'd know right away, cause you can see that, that little heater's kinda going red. If it wasn't heating, it would be gray. So from this, you can kinda look at what the set point of the room's supposed to be, you see what the actual temp is. There's a little alarm category down below. Um, if, say, it says, uh, bottom of the coil, it's on. If that wasn't running, then that would be an alarm, it would turn red. So it's a real easy way for Gail to look at this first thing in the morning, to see if he has any issues, if anything's out of bounds. It's pretty easy to drill in, figure out where you're at.
Does it send a warning to him by phone or a computer or anything if something is?
Yes. Um, if there's something that's not, that's in a, whatever we determine is a critical alarm, then yes, it will text out. Um, another example is, we'll pick on rooftop unit one. That's what serves this library in this, kind of this section of the building. So here we can, again, you can look at what the temperature set points are supposed to be versus the actual temperature. So again, if you look at this graph and you say, wow, you know, the thermostat says it's supposed to be seventy-one and it's eighty-five or sixty-five, then from here you can kinda look to see what's going on. Like here, you can see the heating coil is not heating. And on this one, it's just gray. Same that, with the cooling coil, if we're in summer, that would be blue. But this gives you a good visualization of what's going on. So, you know, you can look and say, well, my outdoor air conditioner must be open, cause the temperature's really cold and it shouldn't be. Uh, like now, you can see it's, we have thirty-six degree air coming in, and we have sixty, what is that out there? Uh, sixty-six degrees. In the classroom, we have variable air volume boxes that have reading coils in those. This is kind of a summary page, so you can real, just look at all the AV boxes and see what the zone temps are. And then over on the far right, you can kinda see what the, the set points are supposed to be. So again, you can see right away if there's an issue. If there was, uh, if it was way out of bounds from the set point, it would be over here on the side, the zone temp, it'd be either red or blue. Red means it's too hot, blue means it's too cold. So if you see that, so if Gail looks at this first thing in the morning, okay, I have nothing in, out of bounds. So then he can go about his business and, or if he sees one that's on the edge, you know, maybe it's seventy-six-seven and it's sixty-five, but it's not an alarm, he can go to that box and kinda look at it and see if there's anything out of bounds on that. And he can simply then go to that room number, we'll pick on, uh, home ec again. Double-click that'll bring up that particular room, like we looked at before. So there's all kinds of ways for him to navigate the system, so he doesn't have to keep going all over the place to find it. You can, we've got multiple ways that, that you can get to this information.
Which range do individual teachers have the temperature?
Three degrees.
Each one there?
Yeah.
So it's total.
So, uh, I think we said, was it seventy-two for cooling? And seventy for heating, so they can go seventy-three, sixty-seven in the winter, and then seventy-five to, uh, sixty-nine in the summer. So it does give some variability in the room. And it's kinda, you can see when I bring up, when you bring up the floor plan, I was looking at this earlier, um, like room one oh two, that's sixty, what is that, sixty-eight degrees, and that's what the room set at. And then you, there's no, other rooms that are set at seventy-three, seventy-four, but there's, you can really see kinda where the different teachers like to set those set points. Some like it cooler and some like it a little warmer. We did rebalance, when we first put the system in, we found an issue in the principal's office. Um, there was, the duct work in there was kinda messed up, so we came in and cleaned the duct work up and then balanced it, because we were having really cold, or it was really hot in the summer, really cold in the winter. So we didn't, we had one room that was getting like three hundred and fifty CFM, when it was only supposed to be getting like one fifty. And then, uh, Kyle's room, it was only getting like seventy-five CFM. And then out, out in the front reception area, that had like eighty-five CFM, and everything was supposed to be set at about a hundred and fifty CFM. So we reducted it and then balanced the system, and I think it's been quite a bit different in there, hasn't it, Kyle, since we did that?
I'll see you with a stocking cap in the morning.
Yeah. Well, especially his office is right there on that.
North wall.
Northwest corner, and it was pretty cold, so...
So Byron, can you show us the gym RTUs?
Sure.
Those are our new ones, right?
Absolutely.
And if we ever have any request for adjustments to temperature, it might be the gyms.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
You got anybody dancing next week?
I do.
For example?
I do.
So we're gonna have, we're gonna be over capacity in the gym, it's gonna be warm. Well, grandpa wanted a little cooler, okay, so...
We can do that. So here, um, this is the, uh, west unit on the pirate gym. So we have two units, we have two separate graphics. You can see we're just adding a little bit of heat in there right now. The set point in that gym is sixty-eight degrees, and it's showing, I can't read on that. Um, it's sixty-seven point two degrees, and we're trying to get to sixty-seven. It's adding a little bit of heat. But in order, all I gotta do to change it is just go to that box, click it, set whatever set point I want it to be, and then it, and it automatically goes to that set point and holds until I change it again.
Then we go ahead and drop that to like eighty-five.
Or raise it to eighty-five.
Exactly.
On the other, but, uh, so, so yeah, what if we, you know, we wanted to nail our eye?
Right.
Wanted to add a couple degrees or subtract a couple degrees on the spot?
Yep.
Where would we do that?
You can click on, on the actual set point. Just did this as an appearance after.
Might have to stay for a while on it, but...
Let's go to the one.
Yeah.
Two. There we go. So you go, put it on that count and then you set, and then set your set point, whatever you want there. So right now it's set at sixty-five, so we can change it to seventy-five.
This is which one?
Click, this is unit two.
In the pirate?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, we, but we do have it scheduled to be unoccupied right now, right? As I see up there, so, I mean, and I know those are, we've set.
You can change, you can change those.
Yeah, so that'll automatically adjust the set points.
Correct.
Occupied versus unoccupied.
Yeah, but that's all you have to do to change the set point, is just click on it, and then go down to that set, click set. It brings up that temp and you set whatever you, whatever temp you want it to be.
So is it, you make that adjustment as fast as possible, Ken, or is it do it over a matter of time so you don't notice? If you went in there and raised it ten degrees, would it just break it out?
It won't, it won't go from zero to sixty in ten point two. It'll start gradually bringing that heat or cooling, whichever, up slowly to get to it. It won't take all day.
Right.
But it's not instant, yeah, so you don't get, if you're sitting there and you're not gonna be like, oh my gosh, they're roasting. You know, in case somebody raised it seven or eight degrees while you're in there, you won't, it won't do it that quickly.
But this one, yeah, isn't actually running right now.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Okay, I wondered if you could change one to go from gray to red, so, just so they can see it in real time.
Let me find one that is.
Is this live versus?
Kind of blind side in here, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Here's one.
What was that?
Is this live or is this just a?
Yeah.
No, this is what we're seeing right now. Seven should be running, right? Yeah. Nope. That one's running as well. That's a bad thing we're doing tonight, isn't it?
I suppose. Yeah, they should most all of the seven and nine ones that's running.
Okay, so this is the locker room unit, it is running. And the heat is already on, on now, and it's going in the women's gym, that, that side's heating and the, uh, boy side is not, cause it's at set point. So there's that, I click that button, and that change, that will change the set point in the, uh, girls' locker room. So I can change it to, if I go to say sixty-five, I'll change it back, but then you should eventually see that heat turn off on that unit. Cause now I've taken it from, it's trying to shoot to seventy-one degrees, and now it's saying, uh, I only want it to be sixty-five. There. Now it shut off.
Yeah.
Put it back, or we'll be, you know, I have to set tomorrow.
So I, I primarily wanted you to be able to see, well, is, we spent, invested a significant amount of money in air quality, um, and just to see the, the intricate, um, design and, you know, how, how we have the, you know, precise controls.
Yep.
You know, here in-house.
Yep.
Uh, for, for a while, for the first several months, we'd have to call or text Byron and he'd, he'd take care of this for us if we needed any adjustments. It's been rare that we needed adjustments, so they've all settled in. They've ended up providing lots of service since then, though, on fixing some things, whether it's duct work or a couple of other things. Byron was just up on the roof last week on a sixty-degree day.
Yeah.
Uh, spent some time up there, and we serviced them after the storm, um, facility admin gets good, and so, um, it just, yeah, wanted, wanted you guys to be able to see, uh, and also maybe, you know, we, we understand why air things as expensive as they are, well, they, the mechanics of it is, it's pretty high-tech.
You would lose your internet connectivity for some reason, I assume, just, they just go to manual control and?
Um, if, if you lose internet, there is, like, from the out, to the outside room, the network inside the school stays pretty solid. Uh, we've never had that, we've never lost that. I've lost connectivity when I'm in Omaha trying to get in to the system. Uh, but so far we have, I don't think we've ever had anybody on the school's network that it hasn't worked. What it does, though, to answer your question, let's say something did happen internally with your server, the computer system stays where it was. So if it was in heating mode and had a seventy-one degree set point, that controller is gonna, it, cause their power's separate, so it'll just maintain the last status until communications is restored.
Yep.
So, uh, so in the event that you would lose internet, your system, you know, the unfortunate thing there would be, but we can manually override the fans, is if it happened, like, say, tonight, when we're unoccupied, they'll stay unoccupied. So the next morning, we'd have to go in and manually start the rooftops. So that would be the only time that could really create a problem.
Yeah, I would imagine it'd be pretty rare.
It's, yeah, it's rare. But that's what would happen if you would lose the internet connection. Uh, the controllers are smart enough, they have the programs in each controller, so it would just leave it as last status that it had.
So can you change it so the, each room has more of a range if they wanted, or not?
We can.
Like, you can set it up like that if?
We can get an eight, eight degrees.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah, if you wanted it to.
But typical standard, you know, like, what we run into on the control side is usually about three degrees. Um, cause you try to, to pick a, a fairly, like, seventy-two is pretty standard for cooling. So then you can go three degrees either side of that. Typically, we don't see too many people wanting to get it too far out. Once in a while, you know, you'll get somebody that, well, I'd like to have it sixty-seven, you know, in the summer or something like that, and you gotta, gotta look at it and go, well, you know, do we wanna spend the extra energy or not? So, but that's up to admin at that point. Three degrees seems to be pretty acceptable. I, you know, even in my own home, I usually don't go more than a degree or two. So three degrees, I feel, is fairly generous to give them that anyway.
So can you tell, like, outside rooms with outside walls versus inside rooms, how much more, that they run a lot more, or you gotta set one that higher to keep them comfortable?
You know, watching this all last, like, especially last winter, you know, around this night, it was extremely cold. And really, the, the interior building stayed pretty stable. Um, that was prior to us fixing the principal's office. That was the, the area that we noticed the biggest fluctuation. Um, but a lot of the, you know, along the west side and then my home ec, it held pretty solid, so...
But you can tell whether it runs a lot more to heat that, you know, takes a lot more air or fuel.
Yeah, and it, I mean, it did, it, it obviously ran the, the electric duct heaters at a higher percentage than, like, now, we're, in this kind of weather, I'm seeing about twenty percent usage on that heating coil. Um, where last winter we were up around eighty, eighty-five percent, especially the buildings up that have a little bit more north, north exposure. Down on the south side, it's just reversed, cause we, you get that solar gain and, and during the day. And then the, the most stable is right here in the library, cause we're a hundred percent interior. So it is pretty stable, but the heater on this unit barely runs. Uh, I haven't seen it over five with five percent, even last year when it was extremely cold, since it's completely interior, so... I mean, it's a different heat, and I was worried, you know, last year, last winter was kind of the first year, because we had the steam heat before, and you had some rooms that the valves didn't quite work, and, you know, room would be eighty. I was a little concerned, you know, when you go to the new type of heat, but everybody seemed to weather it well. And, you know, we didn't really get, I didn't hear too many complaints, other than when you had an issue with duct work in the principal's office.
So the art rooms stay a lot better, and they always stay so hot because the, the pipes let through there.
Yeah.
Right, right above the, the grid.
Yeah.
Yeah, haven't heard a word, and I got a expectant lady in there. And, uh, I think she's pretty comfortable. She hasn't fired up her new kiln yet, you know, that makes sense of it. Well, Byron, thank you.
You bet, you're welcome. Thank you for letting me come and share.
Byron takes good care of us, uh, last... Uh, last month, you made a decision on our elementary HVAC, uh, service, uh, to go to Byron and his company and so uh, he has a vested interest in playing the public schools, I know.
I do.
And that makes a difference in their level of service, but, um, they're, they've, they certainly treat us very well from, from my perspective.
Serve a good meal at state school, boy.
Well, thanks for having me.
Get this, I got it over here, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks for coming.
Yep, have a Merry Christmas.
See you Saturday.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, bacon cheese tray.
You bet.
I should have roped that up, I should have shared that with everybody.
One big cheese tray. Byron, we never saw anything of that.
I know.
Last person goes to, he's the last.
He went to the president, huh?
Thank you again.
All right, we'll move on then to number ten, which is our board development, depending on in that chapter forty-one or forty-two.
Just a couple pages primarily about community engagement, communications. Which is a, a routine topic, I think, for school boards. And most school boards, not, we are not unlike most school boards, I would say, in that, in, in rural schools. Just your, your monthly meetings are your primary opportunity for, to engage with the community. School districts generally have to get someone creative to try to, you know, provide a greater variety of opportunities for, for engagement. And then depending upon what's going on in your district, you'll, you'll solicit and receive more engagement if you're working on a bonding issue, for example. Or if you have, um, something catastrophic, maybe that you're dealing with, uh, that, that tends to increase the, the level of, of engagement as well. But when things are generally routine and that's quite a high percentage of time, sometimes you operate, not unlike how you operate with the community.
I just remember back when you first came, when we started that group to come in and evaluate the school facilities and what needs to be done, you know. We had a pretty good group, first couple of meetings and everybody showed up. After that, it was maybe fifty percent, you know, I just, uh. Oh, we met three or four times, probably, so.
Set some priorities for the, the, the next several years, really. So, I mean, if we were to look back, Mr. Sauer, I think we had our minutes from those meetings in, in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. We'd probably find that a lot of the discussion we had, the board, followed through quite a bit.
But I'm just saying, to keep the community involved, it was even harder to do it in that situation. They showed up the first couple of meetings and then it worked and.
You hosted some coffee break.
Yep, 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 tried, tried that for about six months or the first year or so and, um, and that's, they, they, just because you may only get one or two or three folks. Is it necessarily the reason to say, well, I guess these, these aren't productive? So I, I could or should continue to do that. But that was kind of the first year when folks maybe were, you know, maybe wanting to get to know me. So I, 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 I wouldn't be opposed to, uh, continuing with that or starting that again if that would be your recommendation, uh, for me. I'd be happy to do that.
You know, curriculum, curriculum is probably the biggest thing, you know, you have to pick the people that want it all, you know. So when you guys do studies with curriculum, it's mostly teacher group, right? Very seldom have outside community.
I heard a comment and it wasn't that to do with the board about communication tonight from a new parent preschool. She loves the Sunday night messages from the three of you, just really likes to be in the know. And she also said the school facility, so this is a perk for our maintenance and our janitors, is amazingly clean and crisp and just very attractive. So, I thought I'd pass it on to you guys because it's nice, but she loves being connected through those messages on Sunday nights.
I liked it. I liked it.
Oh, I liked it, and then I don't have anybody here.
I understand.
Yeah.
And the Facebook page has been great, where it's all ages and all activities and so, everything.
Thank you for doing that because this is a new parent to our school.
The Facebook is through Class Intercom, which we brought on new a couple of years ago. It syncs our, our Twitter and our Facebook and, um, you know, Kyle and Jen, uh, that's a, you know, we, we routinely, a few times a year maybe. We go to teachers and we refresh their memory on, on how to post things to Class Intercom, which again is Facebook, Twitter, uh, you know, combined. And so, uh, we, we rely on them, you know, quite a bit to, to share those things, Melissa, that, that catch your attention, that are beyond just the activities or athletics.
It's kind of disappointing when you get out there to see how wrestling match, volleyball, whatever went, and still make great things out of it. So, gosh darn it, I wish they would have put it.
Glad you missed it. You know, if we miss something, if somebody says, hey, we rely on, whether we enjoy that, we like, we have a fight to see some.
I thought we're doing, you know, we had some bullet points there, but, you know, we, we do quite a bit of that. Pretty good job communicating. Any other comments on that? Okay. Not, then we'll move on to our committee reports, here from negotiations to start. Talking about.
Yeah, we've, this has been our fourth or fifth being here, it's been a long, small, I haven't evolved in, but we've got the main bullet points, we've agreed on that, so it's probably our second meeting. We've kind of been talking about this, uh, longevity bonuses for teachers that have been here a long time. It's kind of taken on a new shape, probably, from what we started thinking about. Uh, we started out thinking about just, you know, a pay raise after fifteen years or whatever, so much. Kind of turned it into a savings program for the teachers to get them to start a retirement fund. Where we're doing, we're talking about throwing in X amount of dollars and they have to throw in a certain amount to meet the monthly minimum. And then it goes into a retirement fund for themselves. Just trying to get, get our teachers to start saving. We have very few teachers now that have a retirement fund set up through the school, not whether they have something outside, nobody knows. But we still have a lot of young teachers that have nothing. And so we're trying to get them started with that. And so we've been working on how to do that, I guess. We've probably got a meeting or two left, get it before we get it finalized, so. Otherwise, everything else is pretty well taken, trained, so. So hope.
Our meetings are good.
Yeah, I don't know that we'll have it next month. We're gonna bring in insurance guys. Right now, we're dealing with two companies to see if we can get it down there before it being up more. So we're gonna meet with these, give me just a shot to, you know.
Invest.
You know, invest with people, yeah.
One of them seems to have their servers on the other, but we just wanna compare and make sure that they both make good money. And if they're making those investments, that if they're good, it's the one that will be picked to go in.
We're looking at two different.
Right.
We're dealing with two, right.
Right now, there's two options and there are one from each company. So we just kind of wanna hear from both companies.
We'd like to get down to one, so we can just make it a little easier for Calis.
Well, then to just be more consistent. Um, and we also kind of, we're throwing around the idea of the longer they're here, throw an extra five dollars towards that investment as they, as their years of service, yep.
Should it take a certain amount before you, this program would start?
Uh, well, we were gonna start year one, but then it'd be like year fifteen, we would bump it up more, so. And then every five years after that, we would bump it up a little bit more.
Start right away on a small portion?
Yeah.
We would do part, part of.
Part, partial and then.
And they have to pick and rest.
So we're not just giving them, giving them to them, you know.
So incentive to come and incentive to stay.
I'm not, I'm not aware in any school district in the state of Nebraska that the board offers an IRA plan in the negotiated agreement. So I mean, this is a, a, a unique, uh, it because school boards are looking for ways to attract and retain. That's the, one of the primary topics of discussion at administrator meetings, school board meetings, attract and retain. What, what can you do? There's a variety of things you can do, but if you're talking about the negotiated agreement, that's all economic impact to the teacher. And usually you're just talking about base, pay, you're talking about steps, columns, the matrix, four and a quarter by four and a half, just a variety of those things. But very few, uh, if any, are they making a contribution to their retirement at year one out of college? Because that's not money in their pocket. And that's usually what, you know, where, where you put most of your in- investment in the teacher is just money in the pocket. But this is, uh, something that tries to invest in their future because we're talking about wanting you to be part of our future. So it, it's, it's unique, it's creative and, but it's somewhat complicated as we've, as we're finding out. But not something we can't resolve and maybe in the January regular meeting, more likely the February regular meeting, probably have a recommendation to the full board. Probably have a agreement and a recommendation to the full board.
Well, and this has really been a collaboration. We told them that we wanted a creative idea, um, something that would benefit them the most, uh, all of the teachers. Not just the ones who've been here longer and, I think that's fair, so this was a big part of their idea.
It's a change face many times.
It happens, it's definitely been a collaboration.
Sounds good. Hope so. If it does work to attract and retain some.
Well, when we brought this to them too, we said, but this has also got to be something that the district can afford. And I feel like that's, that was very upfront and it's been going very well.
Thank you for the update. Yeah, do you guys wanna talk about state convention, not really committee?
Are we doing that now?
Might that be part of your president's report, maybe?
We can do it there too.
Yep.
We'll go then to review our policies for the month, twelve, first, seventh, and fourth.
Yeah, these, uh, you know, in the seven hundreds are all about business operations, so this will have a lot to do with finances. And most everything for school and public school finance is, is, uh, statutorily mandated. So, uh, if there are any changes in language to any of these policies, they wouldn't come from you, quite honestly, or, or patrons. It would come from you, Ken, also. Just gives you an opportunity to, to put eyes on these three policies again. Uh, no recommendations for change in language because I couldn't do that anyway. But deposits and transfers, uh, financial records and audits, and audits is a topic of discussion, pre-discussion later. As you can see, it's been four, five, six, seven here since these have been reviewed. Haven't had any language changes particularly since then from you and the camera either.
Make that make sense a little bit, please. We'll go on to our action items for the evening. Number thirteen, discuss take, task, action, unacceptable, twenty-two, twenty-three audit, annual financial.
So, you know, mentioned briefly last month and maybe the, the previous month as well, that audit is coming. Uh, we had the audit, we got preliminary information back for last meeting, but I didn't have the documentation from you. A lot of the, the specific language, you know, at the end, recommendations by the auditor, very similar, the same with previous years. You know, Kelly and I have gotten to the point where, you know, once, well, we, we kind of anticipate what findings may or may not be, uh, from the auditor. So we're able to ask some, I think, more educated questions, maybe about why certain language is included in the audit. Uh, especially when they're talking about managerial control. There, there's usually always a lot of, oh, discussion and it's the same every year about, you know, handle, the handling of funds. And oftentimes, it's more, you know, cash in and out. And school districts don't have a whole lot of cash in and out, ninety percent of your funds are just wire to wire. So here we're talking about activity funds, you know, gate receipts and, and fundraising, it's that kind of cash. How it comes in, how it's counted, documented, uh, secured and deposited. So we operate like most folks, most all other school districts, but they, they still generally tend to put a recommendation in there about, uh, you know, internal controls and and those types of things that, uh, we didn't have any, as I mentioned last month, uh, we were under budget in all funds for the first time in a couple of years. And so that was definitely a focus and a directive, I take on your part last year, to, uh, let's keep that where it needs to be. Now, we didn't need to make a amendment mid fiscal year. And that was the right thing to do, and it was, you know, again, no, no great big deal. It doesn't affect your levy amount or your, or your revenue that you request. So, yeah, that, you gotta keep, put that with your audit, maybe from last year, they'll, they'll look, you know, pretty doggone similar, but, uh.
So, seven oh four oh four oh two, just looked at, says in there that these are supposed to be distributed to the board and the commissioner by November fifth. Is that, yeah? Because we're just receiving it now in December.
Well.
They, they don't.
We didn't have them.
Out by then, isn't it?
We didn't have them, they, the, well, the, the audit was done by then and was sent to the state. But they didn't send us, you know, these copies until, uh, we got them for a couple of weeks ago.
So everything done on the state side, but it's in time.
Yeah, yeah. We're usually right to the day when we get the audit and they upload it to NDE. And then I go to the Auditor of Public Accounts and, and download the AFR, which comes directly from the audit. AFR is a, a much smaller version, it's just all numbers, put in a, more concise, it's what I use to budget next year. So, but I've got multiple copies, I have copies for the public. If anybody is interested in the audit, I understand maybe some people are, just send them my way, I'll be happy to provide them with a copy. Or you can certainly share yours.
You're gonna put this all online?
Uh, it is, that's not on our website, but, uh, but it's easy to, well, maybe not easy to find, I don't know. Auditor of Public Counsel or Department of that. But certainly available at anybody's request.
Is, uh, we have to accept it then tonight, or is there a chance of flipping it off to next month, just because we got it just tonight?
You, you can sure, and that's only a formality. There's nothing in policy that says that you have to accept it, but I do like the board to acknowledge publicly, uh, the audit's done, we've got a copy of the audit. For, and again, this is for twenty-two, twenty-three, so fiscal year ending, uh, August thirty-first. But certainly can be tabled if you want to study and, and bring questions to Kelly and/or I, preferably prior to the board meeting, uh, in January. So that we can prepare a response.
It looked to me like, of what you said, it, it's very similar to what it's been the last couple of years, the comments. The only thing being different was that, yeah, we did not have any budget accounts that went over, so. Otherwise, the comments are pretty much the same as what they have.
It's probably a PDF that they have saved and all they do is just change the dates and days.
And then send us a, uh, when they, you know.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, I don't see anything that's a lot different than what it has been in the past, but, you know, that's.
Probably so.
It is a lot to look at and.
Yeah, yeah, you can absolutely take a moment to digest it if you want. I mean, it's entirely up to you, again, we don't have to take formal action, it's just what we've done. It's just been standard practice and so I, I always put it on as an action item that can be learned when we receive this.
So next year, when this is an action item in December, could we have this a week to two weeks in advance?
Uh, yes, I, I, when I received it last week, I could have sent it out to you, but I just thought.
So you just had it for a week?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't get it on November fourth.
And there's not a timeframe on it, so if we do it next month, it's not too.
Yeah, it can be done next month. If you, if you want to have it as a discussion item or an action item next month, I mean, we'll, uh, we can absolutely, you know, provide an opportunity. we can absolutely, you know, provide an opportunity next month in an open session to have discussion about any findings you may, or questions that you may have if you're out there.
What do you guys think? Would you be okay with that? Just because it's, we just got it tonight, for any reason, I, I just say that. It's not, I mean, we're most likely not going to change anything.
Through this, but.
Yeah.
And what can we change?
We can't change anything, but we can certainly provide, can certainly provide any clarifications that you may add on some of them.
And it may get some people that have a question to, you know, once it's out. There's a few that do, they may have questions.
I would like to discuss it next month.
I think if that's all right, maybe we just put it off till next month and discuss and accept it in January, just gives a bit more time for everybody to look at it. Move on into number fourteen, discuss take possible action on purchasing clown cash for staff. I look back at my notes, it's been twenty dollars since I was on the board. What was previous to that?
The first five, or the first five, or the increase.
I thought we did do it.
I think we increased it the first year that.
I was on the, yes.
And she said, it always was ten.
And now you're increasing it, because I, you waited for it to go.
I thought we increased it too, but when I look back, it said, I had notes that said it was twenty, eighteen.
In eighteen?
Twenty eighteen, my first. I think I remember it increased.
I don't know what you're, I'm impressed.
Well, you know, this is something that can be thrown in in our negotiations, discussions. How many teachers really want twenty dollars in cash, clown cash? You know, that's something that can be put, I don't know, in the retirement fund? I mean, twenty dollars divided by twelve months is nothing.
Oh, I think they, I think it's good for our community to, to give back, you know, it's knowing that they can spend it for yourself, they can spend it for gas. It's just a token of appreciation, I mean, you would love to do more for them.
About thirteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
That goes back into the local economy.
Yes.
And that is for everyone, right?
All staff.
All staff, bus drivers, everyone? Do you have a Christmas anymore gathering? Um.
We do.
Yes, good. We do.
So anyway, I like the clown cash, just because it gives back to the community.
Or here in even.
Well, grocery store area, Mary's.
Yeah, that's right.
I suppose that.
You can't, Family Dollar.
I know you can't, that's one thing I remember hearing.
Yeah.
I didn't know it would, not at the local grocery store anymore.
Oh.
I don't know, I'm asking, I'm asking a question.
Okay, so I shouldn't even say that, that's back in the olden days.
They always used to accept it.
Outlines hardware.
Grocery store takes it.
What?
Their grocery store takes clown cash.
They do.
Yep.
Is it going to be easier to ask who doesn't take it?
So Subway. Family Dollar does not, Casey's will not, Dollar General will not take it.
Does the street take it?
Yep, you can pay your utility bill with clown cash.
There you go.
How about Subway?
Subway does not. It's all listed on the back of the clown cash, so when you get it, it's all in the back.
I know. But we're supporting her.
I get, what are some other suggestions for clown cash?
We can't give them just cash, right? That's pretty important.
You cannot.
That's fine.
Because I asked that a couple of years ago, I think, to legal or something.
Not a negotiated compensation, share cash. Nobody's, you can do that, I mean, that's a question.
I think it looks good, just to do it.
I think the community owners, you know, that do see the money, they appreciate it.
Well, what is the downfall? Why do they don't do it? Because they have to wait to get their money, they have to turn it back into the city, I suppose, and be reimbursed for it.
Kind of that keeps, clown cash keeps money in our town.
Yeah, but it's, why don't they do it?
Why don't they want to do it?
Right, Family Dollar.
Maybe it's not cash to them, they have to take it somewhere to get the cash, so they have to wait that money.
All right, I'll make motion to purchase clown cash for staff member, the amount of twenty dollars each. Okay, move to second, twenty dollars of clown cash. Chance?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Self, yes.
Mike, yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes, motion carried, six oh. Move on to number fifteen, discuss take possible action on accepting twenty-two, twenty-three public, plenty of public schools and a report.
So given a large color version, mostly the same data that we've included the past several years. We did make some adjustment to the case to composite and added percent proficient on there. And SCAS, we just went to percent proficient on those. It's just a little bit of comparison with state. Added something about attendance, there was quite a bit in the paper over the course of the past year, what COVID did to school attendance. So I thought that'd be a, a good one to include on there, although it didn't have quite the discrepancy that I thought with regard to the state, I didn't put state on there anyway. But we have outstanding attendance, really, you know, here at plenty of public schools. And that says something when kids show up. Says something about home, but also that, you know, I think it's a valuable enough experience to get up and come to school. Otherwise, most all the data is the same, so it's handy for you. If you should have needed this, obviously there's also information on the website, it's information that we provide any candidate for a teaching position that we have. It's generally not requested in any family, but we should include, we should include it in the information packet that we provide to any family, for sure, they don't ask for it, but we should include it.
So I've got my last year's out.
Yeah.
And on the transportation box, it goes back to twenty twenty-one. It's at ninety, right, ninety-eight thousand. We're up to a hundred and fifty-five now, why, why in just a couple of years has that increased so much?
Well, we've, we've added two level three routes, so we're now taking, and those are to Norfolk and Plidwater, we don't do the Plidwater one anymore. But we started going to Norfolk twice a day. We doubled miles that we go to Norfolk. And that was one of them. If I were to look at activity breakdown, I mean, that, that can fluctuate year by year as well. If you make some adjustments with your drug activities, and, and we used to take one van, now we've got a big number of kids, now we've doubled the miles, because now we take two vans. I, you know, I'm not precise, Mike, but those would be a couple of reasons that might spike your, your mileage.
Well, it seems like we, since we're small, we have to drive farther to play games to. Well, and we've been doing like state track, and we've been going more kids for, you know.
Qualifying.
For more stuff, you know, just like one X. Last year we didn't, or district, or state.
You know, and, and again, if we're going somewhere, they might say, well, shoot, we just went, but if we're taking two vans, that's double the miles. So a, a bus would be one thing, but we, we run, well, we run three routes, three bus routes a day, right, and which is, we used to run four, and when it came, we had five.
Because it means less miles, it just means you got less kids, less stuffs.
Well, yeah, but you, but you got, you know, there was a more wheels turning. We've got, well, I give you a transportation report in May, which shows you all our vehicles and rentals. We got a, a, a pretty good fleet for a small school. And somebody's always going somewhere, folks are busy, that's for sure. I, I know that annually, the discussion is the option in and out, you saw in your folder, and he's provided you with the list. And I, I, so I, I give you that every year, just to show you who are our families that option in, who are our families that option out. That's not necessarily to appease anybody, but maybe it helps give you some picture of who are the folks who live in our district that are choosing to send their kids to any number of school districts that are pretty close by, almost in the three hundred and sixty degree range around us. So I thought that would just be handy, maybe for you to have.
It's pretty similar, I mean, I mean, if you lost a few, it's about the same as what it was last year. The, per pupil cost, is that updated, or is it just happened to be the same as what last year? It was, it was the same as last year.
Is that the, that was the exact same figures I had on last year?
Yeah, I didn't know if that was a misprint possibly, or that's not changed.
Well, I, I use a little method to make sure that when I get a box updated and how I identify it, I would double check that.
There's all three numbers.
If they're exactly the same, then it's unlikely that I updated it and that I made an error. So I will address that.
That was the only thing I saw, maybe looked like it.
So dual credit, just wanted to get, quite a few more credits earned this year than a year ago, from one eighty-three to two ten, that's what we did.
You must be able to take dual credits as a junior to you or something?
Yeah.
It's been over, still.
The teachers with master's degree, we had a note last year, there was five that were coming, so that percentage has gone up from last year. Thirty-three percent last year.
But we're still below state average.
And people view that as more different, you know, whether you're proud to have a high percent of master's degree, that of course means you're paying for it. Whether a master's degree automatically means somebody's a more competent, more effective teacher, and that's debatable, but it's a, it's a piece of comparable data. I also put in your folder, you saw just a, a profile from the Department of Ed, which has some of the same data, but also just a few other things. But that's a, that's a snapshot that you can get about any district, that exact, that same data about any district in the state, that just came out about three weeks ago. So I, I just thought I would include that in your folder.
Well, what's good, it's like, I just like to have my summary, so you can look at all those statistics right there on one page.
Yeah, I do too, when you see these first, you know, line up. I like seeing it just from, I mean, it's your idea.
Yeah, I think you'll check on that one.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Get that changed.
It would be a fresh copy.
Push that on to you, so we have a final, it won't take long. Yeah, let's just, we'll let you get that figured out.
Yeah.
Prove it next month, that's what was good. So move on to sixteen, discuss take possible action on evaluation superintendent.
So I received your evaluation from Tim, and certainly appreciate the commendations and the directions for growth. And I don't have any questions with regard to any scores or comments. The tool is a tool, and wouldn't matter what tool I think you've used, it's just the, the comments are the most valuable part. And I think anybody that evaluates anybody, they would maybe say the same thing, you know, a light scale, a zero to five factor scale, or whatever, or needs improvement, standard, average, whatever, I mean, those are, those are good, and they can be good indicators, but I, but I appreciate the, the comments as being most useful, so. So thank you, it's, and, and hard work for you.
I indicated to him, I said, some of the, some of the answers, we didn't really know what to put down, you know, you may not know that day to day stuff, so we'll put a three, or, you know, it's an average, if we don't know, there's, there's always a few of those questions on there, so. But, you know, overall, I feel pretty positive. It's a decent system, I think, it's not perfect, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate the job you did for us last year, thank you for the hard work, you know, there's a lot extra, you know, going on this year with the July.
So.
Any other questions on the evaluation process, anything you may? Okay, if not, we'll take a motion to approve the evaluation.
I'll take a motion. I'll say no.
Okay. Move to second, then to accept the annual evaluation in favor, or votes, excuse me, myself, yes?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Chance?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, well, she passed it, so. And then we'll move on to seventeen, discuss take possible action in terms of the superintendent contract for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
So this really requires two readings, you know, according to policy. So what I share with you is a, a copy of my contract, if you were to accept my request. The only language change in it from previous years is salary and cash in lieu. I don't have any requests for, for any change of paid leave, or any of the other language, most of which is based on statute. And contracts are designed to protect the board and also to protect the superintendent, so. It's a guarantee that you allow the superintendent, which you're required by law to have, and it also secures, you know, my services. So most of the language is just, is, you know, from a legal firm. So what I'm asking, you know, as we started talking about a couple of years ago, is decrease my cash in lieu. So the cash in lieu is cash in lieu of a health benefit. So I don't request that, or need a health benefit, and so I receive cash in lieu, and I have since, since my second year. So I, I've asked you to decrease that amount of my cash in lieu, and just shift that into salary compensation. So you have to kind of, you know, combine the two to look at, you know, total, total expense. So I included, I've got an array there for you, and, and then just included, you know, what, you know, my request increases. So asking for two point nine seven percent increase, which would be, you know, considered, I think, by anybody as a below average increase. You know, I, I interpret my evaluation to be an indication from you that I performed above average service, and I'm asking for a below average raise.
So two point nine seven is what the cash in lieu figured in.
Correct.
So it's twenty-eight, full family health, and it's twenty-eight thousand. That's what it's costing.
Yep. And change then with a single dental?
I went back and just did, you know, percentage ratios over the last, we got seven, seven or eight years there. You know, we went from a two point three to a four point eight on the high last. Last six years, we averaged three and a half percent increase in salary.
Six years?
Yeah. Well, the change from sixteen seventeen to, sorry, from seventeen to eighteen, nineteen to twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, to twenty-three. Is that right, did you go down from sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen?
Well, I received the, the health benefit in sixteen seventeen, so it's my first year.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, well, I see what you're, I see what you're doing. Yes, because I only got a percentage of health benefit. So the health benefit is expense to the district, and that's what's in bold print, is expense to the district, that first year.
You took.
I took the health benefit, so cash was only a hundred and twenty thousand, shouldn't say only, but salary was a hundred and twenty thousand, then, then, then was health benefit. After sixteen seventeen, it became a percentage, not a health benefit, as cash in.
Anybody got any comments or feelings as to what you think?
From past year, we've always kind of tried to compare each request anyway to other raises that we've given out, some percentage. I believe the teachers have passed negotiated, isn't that around three and a quarter? Isn't that right? He's pretty close to that. He's right in line, anybody with what's his, no?
The only thing I'm looking at is just, if you look at these ones that are comparable in years, which, you know, he's only one of the doctors. You look at, they're running about three thousand per year increase, no matter what they start at. And Dr. Alt is running more closer to that, four thousand.
Bloomfield's getting eleven thousand on their raise this year. So one thirty-six and one forty-seven. Don't feel this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you look at that, I, I did quick math, I had a lot of those, plus those are about a three percent raise other than Bloomfield, that's substantial, I'm not sure why that's jumping.
He's been there fifteen years.
No, actually, he's been superintendent for fifteen years, and that's some just year three improvement, so.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, so I, I visited with a few other superintendents too, it's pretty standard for them to ask, you know, same thing that teachers get, you know, I mean, I'd be happy with the same percent raise that teachers get. And your teachers are going to be well over four and a half.
That's all. We didn't get all right by here. My feeling constantly makes me feel depressed. My, my feeling what I got from the evaluation is like, Dr. Alt said he's, we're happy with the job that he's done, I don't think he's unreasonable, I'm asking what he's asking. We don't have the, this, the rate doesn't show the total benefits.
Yeah, I kind of, yeah, to, to determine, uh, additional compensation, whether that's a cash in lieu or whether it's a health benefit. But every superintendent has a, likely has a twenty-eight thousand dollar, potentially a twenty-eight thousand dollar health benefit expense to the district. You know, mine, mine isn't, so it's cash in lieu, which does inflate the salary. Uh, since I'm asking you to shift some of that cash in lieu to salary, and you understand, um, why I'm, I'm asking to do that. It, uh, it's no, at no expense to the district, it does prepare, uh, my pension plan, uh, a little bit better.
Well, when you look at it, you don't know the full, you know, if it's normal, this array, it might look like.
Yeah, so it's, it's not, it's not apples to oranges, but it's not Honeycrisp to Honeycrisp. It's Golden Delicious to Honeycrisp, so it's still apples to apples, but they're different.
That's deep.
Different kind of apples.
Good thing I booted on. Not even my concern, I do think you're doing a good job, and I do think that we're worth what we're paying you, I just don't know if our district can afford it for you.
Well, the, the district can afford to pay me. The district has always afforded to pay me. If I ask for zero, that would be, uh, three, four, five thousand dollar. You know, I mean, it, it, that's not going to break the district, we're going to have a much more significant increase in our negotiating agreement than five thousand dollars. Uh, now, I, I, you know, I wouldn't want to compare the value of a teacher to the value of a superintendent, I mean, everybody's service, I think, is valuable, but, um. But I, you know, I recognize that after the, you know, over the course of, you know, when somebody stays in a district for several years, you're going to get a raise every year, and at, at some point in time, if there's greater turnover in schools in your array. Uh, those will all, will generally always adjust just a little bit downward, whereas if somebody stays in the district, theirs is going to continue to grow. That's just the nature of it, and at some point in time, you're going to move from lower part of the array to the middle, to the top of the array, and I know that I'm there, I recognize that. And it's just, uh, that's, that is the nature of it, but, uh, so I, I, I recognize that it's a, it's a, it's a significant investment, I recognize that. Uh, but I also know that I, I could rightfully ask for more than two point nine seven percent.
Well, I've said, pretty much since I've come here, that it's tough to justify your doctorate at a school this size. It's tough to come up with, to pay you for what you, what you've got schooling to do, you know. Be easier to do if they had seven hundred kids or a thousand kids. But, uh, but I also look at it, you know, we've got a full staff of teachers, we got, we find replacements for everybody, you know, which has to do with principals also. But, you know, we just, we just keep rolling here, it's not like some schools that don't have a music teacher or a math teacher or this or that or coaches. You know, this school is advertising for wrestling and track coach, you got two months after school started on the radio, you know. So, you're, you're doing a good job on, on that, so.
Yeah.
And, and other things too, you know, I mean, our facilities are tremendous.
This is October, the number of core comp, we're still looking for a sixth grade teacher.
For a teacher.
Sons that we teach in sixth grade, though they have multiple classrooms, they're still sixth grade, they still. They'll let you, they'll, or staff, but. What did you say, cost of living?
Typically, it's cost of inflation, three percent.
Three percent, so just have a master for that.
Maybe round it, it's pretty close. What is, I, I just, what's Pierce or North Fork or any of those bigger schools?
Uh, Pierce is higher, North Fork is double, close to double, you know, obvious per, obvious reasons, over public schools, you know, but.
So when I had a copy of the, who was president of the school board in Pierce, they have, uh, they have to keep their staff around because North Fork is supposed. So, it would raise our array if Pierce had been there.
Yeah, I didn't include Pearson in our array, for, for that reason.
And, uh, there goes for classified, certified, and their administrators.
I'm in more years till you retire.
I don't know, I, I, as long as I'm personally and professionally fulfilled, I may stay another decade.
So he gave me a three percent.
Was that a threat?
And, yeah, but here's the deal, you don't want to see me go so you can save ten thousand dollars on a superintendent. All right, so I don't even want to have that conversation, I will stay as long as you'll have me. At some point in time, I may decide with my family that, you know, ready to go, and that might not be the first year I'm eligible for full retirement. I'll stay as long as you'll have me.
I'm just looking at it as a pure business perspective, and, uh, if I pay a guy a dollar a day, he better be making me a dollar ten a day, otherwise I'm losing money on the deal.
Well, but this is.
So I guess my thing is, since I look at it, I'm like, oh, we, I'm not trying, I don't say we're going to get rid of you, but like, we can't afford to just keep you for ten more years and keep giving you three percent. When we could give somebody not as educated to do the same job for twenty thousand dollars.
To do it at the same level?
Yeah, and also.
I think that, uh.
Well, maybe.
There's also shortage of administrations, the administrators, we're looking at, that's across the board. They're looking for, schools still looking for principals or administrators.
I see, uh, we're doing is working. I see a lot of these numbers going up, you know, our attendances up, our levels are down, I mean, there's a lot of things going up for A C P scores, our.
And if you want to keep seeing those improvements, you keep stability in your administration.
Assistance, yes.
Yeah, you can't have revolving doors administrators anyway, so I'm trying to save the buck.
I have that as a teacher, a fellow.
You have some areas of schools that are doing that right now, and you hear, you hear some things that you don't like. So it's asking for a little less percentage of raise, people that's managing, it's trying to cost of living increase.
Awful. But you look at the opt-out numbers, which is always a big deal, but you also look at our, our enrollment, I don't know how far that went back out here. But it's the highest it's been since, I don't know, some of that has to be, you know, withdrawing kids in that, for some reason.
Does it like to play sports?
Well, when I was looking at the opt-out, I recognized a lot of names that opted out a long time ago, some of them before Dr. Alt arrived.
Oh, yeah, a lot of it, a lot of it is, that's where mom and dad went to school.
They're, they're, they're fringe, aren't they?
Yeah, and some of these are.
They have a choice in town, their mom and dad went to school right now.
They have a choice, and with, they've just hopped across the line.
Well, and a handful of these are my neighbors.
Yep, exactly.
So, I.
You know why?
Yep, I mean, I'm on the fringe.
Yep, you are.
Um, so I understand, but there's, there is a lot of these names that, even though they have younger kids, the older siblings, I mean, it, it's been a long time.
But I don't think our enrollment would be going out there to work or happy with what we're scoring.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to take, you know, credit for increased enrollment, can't, certainly can't do that, but I guess, you know, one thing I would say and I'd give credit to, you know, our whole administrative team. We have a, somebody who we would consider to be an exceptional teacher in our district that we hired five years ago, right out of college. Uh, he had the opportunity to go home, they recruited him back home, wanted him to come and teach back home, he doesn't live in town, wanted to recruit him to come and teach back home. And he told them no, because he's treated too well here, his words to me, I'm not, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to apply, even though they want me, you treat me too well.
And that's not just one thing or another, that's the whole system.
That's a good thing.
It's administration, it's facilities, it's pay, it's, it's the whole, whole thing.
Make a motion.
And so.
I'll make a motion to approve, I'll make a motion that we approve the term for Dr. Farinoff's contract for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, as presented and to be voted on for his second reading at the January regular working.
What did you put it on?
It's as presented. Next month we'll put the.
Yep, so I'll post this on the website, I'll provide a copy to the, to, uh, newspaper, which, on their social media, I mean, it's public knowledge. So, um, you may have maybe, you know, a little more interest in next month's meeting, that's, that's fine, but, uh, it needs to be publicly published. The contract that the board intends to approve at the meeting, and then you, you don't have to, but then, you know, we're, we're open for negotiations here.
Mike made a motion, do you have a second, is there any other discussion? If not, we'll take vote, Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chance?
No.
Melissa?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Motion pass, five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on then to, uh, reports, starting with activity direct report.
Winter sports is underway, uh, Mike, you brought up the travel stuff on there. Uh, we did add bowling since that was done, so that's another sport, girls wrestling is going in there, so, uh, we do have a few more things traveling-wise, just to add to that too. Um, and our schedules are a little bit fuller, so all of our schedules are full now, um, each year that our teams go out. Congratulations to the One Act casting crew, uh, district champions, and finished fourth at state, it was hilarious if you went to it, so. Um, bowling, we've been having some discussions, we had to move a bowling duel, uh, last week because the machines downtown were not working, so we had to go to Osman, uh, to compete. Uh, he's supposed to be working on those and getting that taken care of, uh, but I did reach out to Mr. Pol at Osman and just ask him about co-opping in the future. Um, if they have more kids that want to bowl, uh, and it also gives us a place that's, um, doesn't have the same downtime that we are having right now. Or it would give us another option. Um, not saying that we're going to do that, I just floated that idea by him to see what he would say, and he said he would take it to their administration and to their school board and have a discussion, so.
Do they have regular, they have a team pretty much?
They have unified bowling, they don't do regular team bowling, so.
Or do you currently practice? If our machines.
Down here.
But ground have any problem with machines, they can't have good practice?
I know we've only used two lanes before practice.
Is there?
Leo's been talking to me about it, so. Um, but yeah, I need to talk to Randy and get an update on that, but wanted to let you guys kind of know what's going on, just so you're aware. Conference-wise, we've been talking about, um, in conversations with seven other schools about developing a new conference. At the last meeting, we kind of wanted to set a timetable of bringing it to you guys to, for your approval at the January meeting to move forward with that as a group. Uh, the conference would be eight schools, we're all C two, D one, go back and forth in between those ranges, so we're all about the same size. Uh, the main reason for us wanting to do that is, uh, provide our kids a few more opportunities. Um, and it's a lot easier to manage around conference when there's not sixteen or seventeen schools. So it'd be a little bit more feasible to do some of those different things that we're looking at and trying to add a few more junior high activities and experiences for those kids. Um, so next month, if you guys have more questions or anything, uh, please let me know, because we're going to have another conversation here in December. And then we'll come to the board and ask if we have your approval to move forward with that.
So can you tell us, you were working on an eighth school at one time, the one you asked?
Yep, so right now it is, um, Harding to Du Castle, Laurel, Lutheran High, us, Elkhorn Valley, Summerlin, Neely Oak Hill, and Westhold.
You weren't here last meeting.
But if I create one of them.
No, they're.
And who's, who's their place?
Westhold.
Westhold.
You said between C two and, and D one, so how does that work if, uh, you know, if C two plays eleven man and D one plays eight man football, like, how do you got to do that?
So football-wise, you don't really see a whole lot of conference affiliation with it. Um, the only one, well, actually, none of them are going to be eleven man next cycle, Westhold's going to opt down and play eight man, so every school in that conference will be.
Football's managed by the state, global school districts, and they set their schedule.
How Westhold was growing like leaps and bounds.
They're going to be ineligible, so.
They're, they're eight man football next year.
I mean, when they built that, that just other schools, because they needed one room.
They got a lot of kids, they got a lot, that town is like thriving compared to, like, our town, business-wise. Thanks for living out there, so. It's a very nice town.
No, I like the idea of making our conference smaller, or more set in size, go from C one to D two, that was kind of ridiculous.
I mean, we're never going to play your routine in our conference, I think, all the years you've been in.
I mean, we're never gonna play every team in our conference, I think, all the years we've been in, there's schools that really play.
So that was one of the things we talked about, is being able to play every school, have a true regular season. Much easier to run a tournament with eight teams versus sixteen, so.
So you hold back to be there?
I don't know what we're gonna call it. Uh, they did talk about, um, you know, the initial startup fees and stuff like that at our last meeting there. It's gonna be a cost to districts just to get the initial start going for awards and medals and things of that sort for those first two or three years.
So it's not gonna be approved in the state or kind of state?
No.
It's eight schools.
Yep.
So you still call it the Big Eight?
That's right, we can call it the Big Eight, and that thirty-seven schools.
You know, there was sixteen teams. It'd be better than calling it the Pac-A, because. It's a fear. So is this gonna mess up some other confer, other schools that are gonna have to find a different conference? Cause it's gonna be kind of a void in the middle now, isn't it?
Uh, we took it to the Lewis and Clark and shared everything that we've been talking about and whatnot. And, um, you know, I think they're, they're okay with everything. I have no idea what the discussions are at the NBC right now, so.
It's gonna be plenty big.
It takes all their biggest schools out.
Yeah, but we'll still have. Okay, I suppose for that, thank you. Move on into principal report.
The only thing out of the ordinary that I included is just testing data. Um, we wanted to be able to show you guys as far as NCAS, where we compared the previous years. So we included that for reading, math, and science, and then we also included our ACT data that came out recently. Sometimes the public doesn't always understand the testing that takes place at the state level, at the local level. So my, um, article in the newspaper this week or last week also kind of explained at the local level, the different things that we do to help with this at the state level.
Do you have a plan or maybe an explanation on why English is so low proficiency? For what, eight percentage points, seven percentage points above below state average? Am I right? Six, five? State proficiency is fifty-eight percent, or fifty-three?
Look, that's overall.
Yeah, that's overall.
Um.
Is it, kinda made some number you do, I don't know, it just, it kinda sticks out anyway?
ELA is always gonna be your lowest scoring one across the state. Uh, but a lot of that, we've put a lot of time into resources, and that's where we're putting a lot of our intervention time too.
Is it?
Um, so that's what we've been spending the majority of our time on.
Even with our Ainsworth Plus, when we made that purchase, that, there was a lot of moving parts within that platform that was going to help with interventions or reading.
I'm sure COVID still has a little bit of a.
Um, I think it'll be with us forever, yes.
So.
It probably will stick around until the kids that were coming into school in twenty twenty are grown.
Correct.
I know that, um, my kids each have an area where they struggle, and I do attribute it to that. Because I have a teacher at home, for, you know, for when twenty twenty happened, I'm a teacher, so.
Well, it's sad we screwed up the kids' lives over the fake virus.
Science, you'll see a dip, but that's because they just redid the test for science.
Is that right?
So that was the first year of them doing it with new standards, so typically when that happens, you see that, so. And Jim won't say anything, but Jim got a very nice award last week, so, very well deserved. She was the new principal of the year for NAA, N-A-E-S-P.
Just about screwed up your trip.
It did. I had to, yeah, I had to move big drum.
In a good way.
Which was very supportive.
Yes.
But like, NCAS scores anyway, that must not factor into our Aquest rating, we got excellent rate in Aquest.
We got great.
Factors into it.
Yep.
But if you look where, at where the state average is, pretty much in each one.
Okay.
This probably last year for Aquest, if I were to, um, just make a, a guess. I've got a new, our new commissioner, I think is gonna come up, so, something unique and, which is fine. We've had Aquest for about six years now, seven.
Every time you get it figured out, you're injured, actually. You never really know where you're at.
Yeah, just some way to, it used to be, you know, compare schools, and with an actual list, Aquest was an improvement over that. Uh, but still, it, it was imperfect, and whatever Dr. Motter comes up will be imperfect as well, that's, it's an impossible task, really. Um, to have Lincoln tell us what grade of school we are. We, we know, here, you know, but they, 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 they do have to, something they have to do, that's fine.
Whatever group, which is different, and Lincoln, they don't know that, but, you know, you know that a local level still don't know that.
You guys have anything else? Thank you. Thank you, guys. Uh, number twenty, superintendent's report.
Uh, this here's for my team.
Oh, this might be it.
Sorry.
It's backwards up here, we got superintendent first.
Either way.
Okay, uh, there's your, I, if your S three updated, it'll be the same until about next year, this time. Uh, the new lockers that you approved, uh, have been installed in the girls locker, so now we, we are not out of compliance at all with Title IX. Uh, and all our junior high girls have a, have a locker in the locker room. So Gail installed those, uh, last week. Uh, we got another eleven thousand in supply chain assistance funds where, uh, Kitchen is, is using those. Uh, those are funds for usual nutrition. We're essentially using that to pay for milk, uh, for the next couple of years, I guess.
We did buy it all.
So it's, it's COVID.
How's the Northwood bowling?
Milk's been better, we occasionally have one, I haven't heard in the last couple of weeks, uh, of any. And she does a good job of letting me know, there was one day where we did a little video pouring out of Chunky Milk, and so, you know, and they, they, where, where was I? I went to Ramel to have, uh, to have lunch with Senator DeKay and several superintendents. Uh, and got one of their white milks from a different vendor, and it was fresh and did not taste good on my palate. So, uh, so I like our vendor, we'll continue to work with them. Uh, but, uh, LeVey has made it clear, we have little tolerance for, as we should, little tolerance for, for milk that is not past expiration, but is clearly expired for some reason. So we keep a good track of that, I send it to Tim at Island every time we have one. It's been, it's been several weeks, I, I would, I wanna say more than two weeks since we've had any, but we did have a big issue in September. And, uh, that seems to have been resolved. You occasionally have one, when you got that many milk, little milks going out every day. But one in a crate shouldn't be bad, it should be the whole crate, you would think theoretically.
We never know what they answer for.
Same time. They had a truck, they had a truck, uh, with a bad cooler, so they said, they said they put it on a different truck. We said, okay, there is not true, it's got something to change. Uh, so she's doing an outstanding job managing your kitchen, so. So we're in pretty good shape there. So then I have the same information, the, the meeting on the district with state school board conference, which maybe Mr. Rasmussen's gonna, uh, gonna mention, so, uh, as good experience as ever, uh, from, from my perspective, so. Uh, I just appreciate, you know, board members being able to take some time to do that, cause it's not easy, uh, for sure, to spend one night, let alone two, away from family, and, um, but it's, it's a highlight of the year for me. One of the, uh, to go with, with members of the board every year.
This year wasn't so great, my old guest stuck on you.
But yeah, it's something else going on.
And we all brought home very.
Something else going on. Okay, that's all I have.
There you go. Probably, huh? You guys all had some, huh? I didn't know that.
I went with it. I came home with a stomach, so they went through my house twice, so.
Mike left the hospital.
But Mike and I were not feeling great.
Yeah, we were sick.
We can't blame it on that.
You got anything else?
I don't.
Okay. Well, we'll get to, I got a few things on my president's report. Mainly just, uh, wanted to mention, you know, kind of what we did, state school board convention. It was, it is, so, it's a really neat time, if you can find the time to get away. You learn a lot of stuff, you have an opportunity to go to a lot of different, uh, meetings and topics that interest you, and you think, you know, are important to the school. Yeah, you have a lot of camaraderie, you know, time to just get to know one another, which I think is always a good thing, you know, for the board. I think it's just, it's easier for the board to work together, you know, spend some time away from, from ordering.
Well, and the networking too, and asking other schools how they do things, and getting to know other administrators and other board presidents and board members. And, and some of them are pretty close to home, and some of them aren't, and hearing their innovation is pretty neat.
Yeah, a lot of schools doing a lot of neat stuff that you don't hear about.
Well, and issues that we don't face here, you know.
Yeah, I know, I went to the, uh, meeting on legislative issues, so they kinda go what to expect for the coming year. There was one we went to with some students that kinda gave their opinion on what they thought was working, what they liked from their school district, which is interesting, because the kids actually said. And then I, anyway, I attended a, a session on the AI, which I didn't know anything about, and that was interesting, how they're gonna use that. Whether or not you allow it, or do you let the kids, teach the kids how to use it, and the correct way to enhance what they're doing, not to just, you know, write papers and homework for them, so. It was interesting. Do you guys have anything that you went to, you thought was interesting or interesting?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you for sending me to these, cause I have now been to three. I went to a leadership conference in Norfolk, then a negotiations conference in Lincoln, and now the state education conference in Omaha. And in Omaha, I was just really overwhelmed with just how much information there was there. Um, there was a lot of vendors there that I would like to further discuss, like maybe bringing Drivers Ed to our school, if that is something that we could talk about. Um, the farm to table is definitely coming down the pipeline, I don't think that it's coming yet. Um, but it's something that I think we will be looking to adopt, or that the state is gonna have. I wrote that. I'm not gonna read.
Maybe give us the footnotes for it.
Yeah. Uh, I went to one that I found very interesting about social media, First Amendment rights, and how to handle slander against teachers or coaches on social media as a board member. Um, I also encourage everyone with this proposed elimination of property taxes to really do your research as to what that entails. Uh, sometimes things sound a lot better than they are. Um, I, probably my favorite one, and I can never remember their names, I've, I've been with them three times now. The short-haired teacher and the guy that doesn't wear socks. Um, Caleb, is that his name? Colby?
From what? Colby Koesh.
Yes, he doesn't wear socks, I guess that's how I was remembering, but, um, they talked about community relations and working together with community leaders to grow the community and the school. Um, I took away a lot from that, and I'm pretty enthused about that. So, and teacher retention also.
Yeah, those were kind of the hot topics. A lot of good, a lot of good information you could make it, we encourage you to go.
Well, and the entertainment was great.
Yeah.
There was, uh, I don't remember where they were from, I wrote it down, but there was a high school choir that performed, and they were incredible.
Show choir.
A show choir, yeah.
Class day school.
Yeah, they were great.
Uh, one, one thing that, that Melissa, that I took Melissa to on her way there, I had, I did a stop.
Oh, yep.
I did a stop by ELC, I had to drop something off, but I, I, I've never taken a board member, we write a big check to ESU every month. So we were just driving by, and I had something I wanted to do, and I thought, now's the time to do it. So I, so I took Melissa to ELC, where we have several students. And, um, they rarely get school officials to visit, and they certainly don't get school board members. And so I know they really appreciate it to see a school board member from Plainview come and visit their facility. And now, our kids don't know Melissa, but they know me, and so.
Well, that's cause you brought them candy.
I brought candy for the staff, because they serve our kids there, so. A lot, but one time I was there, they mentioned something about Reese's, you know. After all, next time you come, bring us some Reese's, kinda joking. Well, I brought them some doggone Reese's for their workroom, but. Um, I thought it was important for, uh, a board member to see, uh, the facility and those very special kids.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing. I've been there several times as a teacher for IEPs.
Yeah, for IEPs.
And I'm just amazed by those teachers.
Yeah.
This one's in Norfolk.
This is Norfolk, yeah.
Sue, Sue Bailey, it, it, when, when Sue Bailey retires, uh, they'll find another gym, I'm sure, but she's a guy, you don't know her name, but we pay part of her salary, and it's some of the best money that we spend.
She takes kids home on weekends.
So she's, she's exceptional, but at any rate, I was, I, I thought, well, here, we're just driving by on the way around Norfolk. So we scooted in here, but, uh, I was happy to, to have a board member see where several of our students received their education.
Yeah, and they showed me their artwork and some of their schoolwork and all sorts of stuff, I loved it.
Last thing I have is for our members that's going off. Year end, next year.
Initially going off, but the term.
Or term, yeah, we hope not going, uh, the dates are creeping upwards, if you are gonna file for next year, it has to be done by the fifteenth. You just keep it.
I'm liking how my polls are, but it's good.
So just a date to keep in mind, it, it always comes up way earlier than what you think it does. Comets have until the fifteenth, new filers have till March first. Keep that in mind, otherwise, that's it.